We'll go ahead and call our meeting to a word. We want to welcome everyone here tonight. Certainly, thank you for coming. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance and good brother gentlemen. We're going to have our party. Alex.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessed are we. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this beautiful fall day. We thank you for our community and the opportunity we have to be residents of such a fine town. We thank you for our leaders and those who work to service, for those who work in the departments, and Heavenly Father, especially those first responders who do such hazardous jobs to protect us, we're grateful for them and we ask that you would watch over and protect each one. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have because of the freedoms in our country to participate in the leadership of our community and ask that you help us not only as leaders, but help us as citizens to do our part in making the community the best that it can be. We pray for those less fortunate. Heavenly Father, tonight, we know that there are many who are sick and weakened body and we ask your consideration of them. Again, we thank you for the liberties and freedoms that we have. Please lead, guide, and the business done tonight. We trust that Heavenly Father, all that we do would be done for your honor and glory and for the benefit of those in the community. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Also, I have a line note for the board of directors out there. They appreciate that. It's not being well, so yes, that's all. This is from their family. This time, I have a quote here on the comments regarding the orders to be zoned properly located on that avenue from a R4 residential to Big One Village. This is empty lot on National Avenue. The road runs parallel right behind that, along the river. And it's property zone by Mr. Paul Williams. He met with the zoning board several weeks ago and asked permission to change this and they gave 100% for it to do this. What we have to do is on that empty lot, just fix an area where you can put three, four, five RVs, have a RV park on the roof. I don't hold more than that, but in order to do that, it had to be changed to a general business district. And that was still the request and that was still reasonable. So, was any questions tonight? This is a big time.
This would be permanent house and if just been come and go.
Just been come and go could not be permanent or be. There are rules how long one can stay.
And, you know, it'd be nice when you about this. I found out word on the street as to what he was wanting to put in and I think Tim had asked previously that the planning and zoning board, somebody come and give us a report before they made a change and that would be nice. My question is, and I guess it's to Scott or whoever, when Whipplewill came and asked to be rezoned, they were already Big One, but to do everything they wanted to do, they had to be rezoned as F A R. If they couldn't do it as Big One, what's, I mean, I realize that that's just a part of the business affair, but explain the difference.
Without knowing the specifics of what Mr. Williams wants, I would assume this just becomes, he's limited on. He just wanted to do those handful of RVs versus whatever Whipplewill was going to be the entirety of that, but what I know is that Mr. Williams was wanting to have that.
So, you haven't seen a plan or a drawing or a proposal?
This was Nathan Willingham's, when they had the meeting. And he's the one said it had to be R4 to be rezoned. So, that's the reason. What we can do when they have zoning plans, just get the council to come. That probably is just why they just come and go meetings.
I thought they were going to put something in the paper.
Right.
Well, they did run this in the paper.
No.
I know, to us, which come to us.
Like after Tim requested a poll, we got a copy of their minutes, but I mean.
We can prove it. You know, that would be a problem if you do it and I apologize if it didn't.
And we, you know, I would like them to know, because there's nothing in the zoning coordinates itself regarding what we're on marks. So, I mean, I don't know what the rules are or what the, anything. So, I would like a copy of that also.
You know, I understand Mr. Willingham put something in here or was going to put something in here about 60 days, 90 days, or something like that right there. But, you know, I understand that in one way and one way it don't. You've got somebody down there building a bridge and these, these come in here and parked his trout trailer and you're going to make him tear it down, move it to another spot. And I don't understand why you'd have to do that.
So, what does it mean?
I don't know if that's what was put in there, but I understand Mr. Willingham talked about that. I don't have no problem with going down there, but, you know, all this is the only, I don't understand anyway, why don't we even do it? So, I would come back and change it every, every week.
That does keep revise. You're right. Any other comments? This time, we've just started our agenda. Is there a recommendation to approve the minutes from our last meeting? Do you mind saying? I'm with.
Any discussion? Um, favor say. Uh-huh. Is there a recommendation to approve accounts payable bills? Is there a motion to approve those bills?
Uh, my motion, I've heard enough. Looked over how long the minutes gone, several times, but.
Do you mind saying? Um, this is. Any discussion? Um, favor say. This time, we have Amy Gillan, Mary Jones, and Friday, they met with me and Jan and Alie Cantrell, went over audit for 2013. So, they're going to come at this time and can't hold with that. Got a cockpit, I believe, but she's going to hit the highlights. Do what you need to do and turn it over to you.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying thank you for allowing us to dig on it. We appreciate it very much. Then, y'all should have a report and then you should have a spreadsheet that's like two pages in the very front. And instead of going over the report, you know, I thought that it worked pretty good last year to kind of pull it in and, you know, make it more concise and just go over what I probably would go over if I wasn't going over, you know, just the pages I would go over. And so, I've done that again. And so, that's what you have in the spreadsheet. Wanted to add one thing before I get started on the spreadsheet though is you did have an audit. There is a letter in there saying that you did have an audit. It was a good opinion being that these financial statements present fairly the financial position of the city of Hamilton. So, everything, it's a good, a good report. But, on the first page, it talks about government, well, it says overview of the audit at the top. And then, um, this first page is going to be governmental funds, which is going to be everything but the water department. And one thing that a lot of people do is they say, well, let's compare last year to this year and then let's determine if we're better off or worse off. Uh, so that's kind of what I've been, I've done. I've said, okay, here's the top part, which is the balance sheet, and here's the second part, which is the income statement. And I've tried to do a comparison and then tell you what the difference is. So, if you look under governmental funds balance sheet, you've got assets there for 2012, which is 3,600,000, which is assets for 2013 of 3,900,000. So, you see that there's an increase of $366,000 there. Well, I've got a number one beside it. And then down below it, I've tried to explain the variance, the number one there. Uh, so cash stayed fairly consistent. Receivables increased by 297, 929, 61, and prepaes inventory increased by 71, 436. Uh, the increase in receivables were the assisted living project for 105, 545, which meaning that that's a grant, that they owe that money to the city at 9/3, and the water and sewer relocation for 182, 90910. Uh, that, that's going to come up a few times because that's really just a pass through. Basically, uh, there was a letter of credit. The city pulled down on the letter of credit, then they pay the bills, and then Alabama reimburses them and then the city pays back the letter of credit. So, it's just like a pass through, but it still has to show on the books. And effects and all they go and down, so that's why I wanted to mention it there. Okay, so basically, your increase in assets or the receivables, and then in prepaes in the inventory, um, there was a radio contract in prepaid and then there was inventory of gas that was on hand at the pumps that were here. Okay, and then when you start looking at liabilities, you got 233 versus 581. So, you can see that liabilities increased by 348, uh, which I have a number two there. And so, if you look at number two down there, it talks about the main increase was accounts payable of 366, 212. But accounts payable increased because of the assisted living project. There was a, uh, accounts payable meaning that you owed somebody $126,000 at year end and it get paid till October, so it was booked as a payable. That was one of your increases. Um, and the water and sewer relocation, 182, 90910, you still owe for that too, so that's your increase there. Uh, the rest of the increase, the payables was due for the payroll accrual and various other items and accounts payable. There might have been like, I don't know, $2,000 to one vendor and $3,000 to the other. So, it was just various vendors there. On the income statement, well, I, I go to the income statement because the difference in the equity there is the bottom line of the income statement, which is 1806193. Uh, and so, how we come up with that, let's go ahead and go down to the income statement and we'll go over that, which is revenues 6,562 versus revenues in 2013 of 8,197. So, you had an increase of 1,165. So, if you look at the number three there, it'll go down and tell you what the difference is. Okay? Revenues increased due to alcohol tax of 130, there are 0972, and then sales tax increased 216, 4191, which a majority, a lot of that 216 in sales tax is going to relate to the alcohol tax, because basically that's what the distributors had to pay and then the sales tax is on top of that. So, that's, that's a lot of your increases there. On water and sewer relocation reimbursements, 1,145, that's a pretty good bit of it. And then donations, grants like Aggie Plaza and assisted living project would be the, the remaining part of it. So, that's why it shows an increase in revenues. Uh, number four on expenses, 6,012,000 versus 10,096. So, it had an increase of 4,830,000, which, you know, you think that's a lot, but a lot of these has to do with these pass throughs, but let's look, go look at number four and we'll get down to what the increase was. Expenses increased mainly due to the water and sewer relocation of 1,767, capital outlay of 459. It actually increased from one year to the next. Debt service increased 1,624 and other expenses like the Aggie Plaza, uh, which is another pass through. Most operating expenses stayed level, some up, some down, but I just want to come into some of the assets that were purchased for the year considering, you know, I said that it increased by 459, which were the Fulton Bridge property, uh, start to the downtown revitalization, rec center canopy, major pavement, and then various equipment like in the police and the fire. Uh, debt actually increased due to payments on the Alabama power note. Uh, you had to pay that one off and then payments on that letter of credit I was talking about a minute ago for the water and sewer relocation. Um, the next section after expenses is other financing sources. Uh, it actually went from a debt of 421 last year to positive 1,009, so had an increase of 2,337. But if you want to look at the detail of that, if you look at my question, number five is that this line item includes loans, sale of assets, and net transfers in and out. But what made it increase, it had to do with the loan from the line of credit of 1,767. So, I mean, that, that gets paid back, but it shows down here as other financing sources and the sale of the industrial property for 518, 700. So, when you take all this into consideration, I sit back and I say, okay, are you better off or are you worse? And to me, you're better off and the reason being is because the assets, they increased more than the liabilities increased. And plus, you had a positive bottom line, which add to your already positive bottom line. So, if you're looking at the governmental funds, I would say that they were in better shape. All right, so if you turn to the next page, we're going to talk about the water, and we're going to kind of do the same thing. We're going to look at the balance sheet, look at the differences, and then we're going to look at the income statement, and we're going to look at the differences on end. Um, all right, on assets, they were 14,314 versus 14,125, so they actually went down 188,000. Uh, so number one, the largest decrease, when I say number one, I'm just trying to, you know, tell you where I'm going underneath it, but the largest decrease was in fixed assets by 146, 843, 24. Now, what that is, is, you know, you add, uh, you add fixed assets of 319, 116, 76, but then you have to record depreciation at 465, 950. So, if you add those two numbers together, that's where your 146 comes from. And I wanted to note one more other thing right here also, because I'm starting to talk about depreciation and I didn't talk about that on the city side, because on the city side, you do it on modified accrual where you expense assets that you paid for them and then on debt, you expense principal and interest instead of just the interest. And over here on the water side, which is proprietary fund where you charge for services, it's more business-like, you have to recognize depreciation and so forth. So, I wanted to bring that out because it's going to come in later too. Still trying to explain the variance though on the assets while they went down 188,000. Uh, cash decreased 27, 166, 74 due to debt payments that had been paid on the 2009 loans. And then finally, bond cost decreased by 16,855 due to the amortization. Basically, those were some costs that were being amortized over the life of the bond and 16,000 more got amortized off that year. Okay, uh, let's see. And then number two, let's talk about liabilities. You had 4,300,000 versus 3,893, so you had a decrease of 414. And, uh, so if you look down there to number two, it says the main decrease was in long-term warrants for 516, 389, which is over the change because you can only decrease 414. So, the increase came from accounts payable because there was insurance repair that had to be done at year end that weren't paid for till October. So, they had, even though they weren't paid for, you were still liable, so they had to be booked at September 30th. And then like the same thing in the general fund or the governmental funds is there were some various vendors, um, that had, you know, still were owed at September 30th. Okay, so then let's talk about the income statement. Compare the revenues. Uh, revenues of 1,708 versus 1,672, which they actually dropped like 36,000. So, if you look at number three to explain that, uh, the main decreases were in water and sewer revenue. Uh, on an average, there were about 12 more customers than last year, but the usage or gallons had dropped from one year to the next. Uh, when you start digging in to try to figure out who that was, over half of it was due to larger commercial customers like Francis. They might have shut down for a week or so and they had less use, water usage, so. Uh, number four, let's see, is expenses. Uh, so you've got 2,012,000 versus 2,164, so you had an increase of 152,000 there. So, if you look at the detail for number four, it talks about the largest variance of this item, line item were repairs, 53,000, 248. There's a few different repair accounts that added up to that. And then an increase in salaries of 46, 465, which that had to do with, uh, last year, uh, there was another, a new employee that wasn't there all year, but this year they were here for the whole year, so that made a difference. Plus, there were some raises, across the board raises for everybody in July of 2012, so you had a whole year of them in this year. So, that would be your difference there. And then number five are non-operating revenues. It's been 163 versus 168, so it had a small change of 4,000 there. And then if you look at the, the detail for number five, the slight increase here is due to interest income decrease and, and interest expense increase in some. And then number six, transfers went from 421 to 866, so they increased 465. But basically, when you, when you go through and you balance all those, you can see that the increase in transfers was from the general fund. They used some for operations, but then some were to, uh, help purchase those fixed assets I was talking about up there. Uh, the water department actually had about $319,000 in fixed assets that were purchased. Well, the money, you know, was transferred from the general fund, but remember me saying this is proprietary and we depreciate, you know, we capitalize it and depreciate it over a number of years. And the reason I'm getting to that is because if you look at the bottom line, it talks about the bottom line being 225, 814 compared to last year that was lost. But when we capitalize all those assets and depreciate them, you know, like I said, we had 319,000 worth of assets, then, um, it makes the bottom line show as positive. So, then, if you wanted, if you do the overall consideration like I did on the governmental funds for the proprietary funds, um, overall assets decreased, but liabilities decreased by more. So, um, and then equity also increased because of the bottom line and so therefore you would have a better position than you did last year because of the increase in equity and, um, the liabilities not, or the liabilities dropping more than the assets. And then I think that's got those two pages covered. Um, I know I didn't go over the whole report, but it seems to go over pretty good when I go over it like that in other places too, so I thought maybe it would fail.
I have a team to see to talk if I have, so if you have any questions.
So, the bottom line is we've got to do it all, you know, findings, everything is handling.
That's correct.
I'm concerned with how they are too. See the questions, I don't have any. See if we want to, it's Friday night, Alie Cantrell, our accountant, very pleased and happy to be here also. Anything else we can ask on that?
And I mean, you know, you can always ask me later too. I know when you did go into this report, I tried to put on here what pages these relate to. Like the governmental funds would relate to page five and six in the audit report. And then the proprietary funds would relate to pages nine and 10. That's where the numbers were pulled from.
So, overall, that seems pretty good financially.
I do, yes.
No, not at this time.
Got any questions?
I appreciate you doing it like this, but I understand it a little bit better.
Yeah, too, boy, you wrote it down and slide it through.
And also, too, I might forget to tell you something. If I've got it written down and if I do forget, you can read it.
That's good, thank you. Would there be a recommendation to approve the 2013 holiday cash provision? I'm like motion, what? Do you mind saying? Um, favor say. Uh-huh. Do you mind saying? Number five, the, the council's ready to read. Or meeting consideration to approve for the summer 2013, the zoning board located on National Avenue from R4 residential to Big One Village.
It's on Riverside.
It is on Riverside.
And, you know, because if somewhere there inside, you're a little wet.
If you turn it right across to the Nellis building in the street, when you turn the layout, you'd be going toward the San Francisco home right there. Turn right. So, if you turn right, it's on the left, it's the, the lot after.
I'm like motion, what?
Do you mind saying? I'll say. Um, favor say.
Go down.
Would there be a motion to approve this one? I'm like motion, what? Do you mind saying? Say. Um, favor say.
No. I want to see, um, I want to see the, the regulations and the stipulations.
See that's down?
No. It may be a wonderful idea, but I haven't, I don't know what the guidelines are, so.
I'll get it. Number seven is a recommendation to approve a tax, regular enhancement, approve business license, disprove, re-product by the RDS. This is RDS, do we do each year? Jan, you made, can you get us?
Well, it's just a one-year contract that we do.
Cheers.
I was told it's the same, nothing.
How do they know when they issue this license if these businesses are in their proper zoning location?
They do.
Thank her late note.
So, who checks that?
That would be RDS requirement, that would be part of our, that would be like with Mara or the zoning board.
No, RDS does a lot of different audits and there are times when we've got more ones who constantly been checking, making sure people do purchase their business licenses.
Well, for example, I had someone, if they come here to me, I had someone checking, I put it in our business a few months ago and, uh, at home and I said, well, I had to check and see if it's zoned and it was not, so many left to go through the process to change, change it. But, um, you know, RDS would have to bind local.
So, I guess my question is, if I wanted a business license to put business in my home and I went directly to RDS and they issued the license and I got my business, even though it was illegal, I had to.
Right, because you don't have a, you don't have an enforcement officer. The city of Hamilton doesn't have one to go out and just check it. So, unless a neighbor or someone called us and alerted us to tell us, or we found out, you know, somehow by word of mouth, that someone had a business in their house.
On that form, the business has to fill out, they have to fill out the zoning on that application. They had to put it, it's zoning, they had to get that information from the city, something coming upon a business. something coming upon business owner to make that first step.
Be a recommendation to approve this, so agree.
Oh, we've done business with them, Jan. I've been here since 1996 and we've been doing business.
It started, yeah. It was a small company at the time, wasn't RDS, it was.
At that time, they were just flaking their sales, sales packs and occupational packs, and then it was probably 97 when they started doing the business license.
Okay, right, just made a motion, is your second? I'll second. Any discussion? I'm third, second? Not rain, it's a recommendation to approve the 2015 budget. Before we do that, we do need to go into technical session, just a few minutes. We have two issues, a little bit on the budget, call it personnel, and we need to talk, it's a big area, a lot of personnel issues, a bit, a few minutes. So I do need a motion, go into technical session. I'll make a motion. Second, your second? One, third, second?
I mean, I've been with you.
Hold off for a bit.
Huh? That's possible. I think we need, I think we need to wait and see.
Just going to wait, get some light from there.
This fix, this fix, a big water time, I can wait, that's cool.
I'll make a motion, go back.
I'll second.
I'm third, second? Uh, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to approve the 2015 budget. We have a 6.4 million dollar budget and approximately 6.2 million dollar expense with a $200,000 cushion. What we had decided was if we approved the budget tonight, there is money in there for raises, but the raises will not go into effect until we can determine the amount to be given. But if there is a cushion in there for it, so would there be a motion to approve the budget as we discussed?
I'll make a motion, please.
Is your second? I'm third, second? Couple announcements before we have a motion to adjourn. Remind everybody that if they're watching this tonight, the legs in this tomorrow, a post will be open from seven until seven. And remember to bring your voter ID for sure, it's at the rec center. And Friday night, the Aggies will be traveling, play Dershow at seven o'clock, so we'll unleash the Aggies. Good luck Friday night. Sell tickets for Northwest Alabama Nutcracker is on sale now. Other performances will be 7:00 PM on December 11 through 13, and 2:00 PM matinee on December 14. If anybody needs to know the numbers, 9210509. Also, San Onofre Square, Christopher Perdido, December 15, on a Monday, I think that's.
That's our meeting, so.
So we might need a motion to change that December meeting unless y'all do it.
Or either do it later, either do it at seven.
Do it after the meeting, after the parade.
And just make sure we don't have any public hearings, because you had to sit, you and Jan had to miss the parade, the public hearings.
So we just still have it on the 15th of December, just after the parade will have council meeting, well, that might be six o'clock or so, six thirty?
Parade at six.
Four years.
San Onofre Square is part of the parade usually.
Takes what, about an hour because of the problem, go around?
And the grand opening for the ramp dawn will be Thursday at one o'clock, this downtown Hamilton. Ramp dawn is completed, likes just a few things, having it wrapped up. And also wanted to thank Motorsports for their contribution to the city, for the Hamilton Police Department, Fire Department, very, you can touch on that, you're up here before we go. Two vehicles that's already been used quite a bit, and I think they're a real asset to our city.
Yeah, we just, Yamaha has a deal that's called a law, law program, and basically it's for, you know, fire departments, rescue squads, police departments. And we had Chief Baker and Chief Wright, you know, type of letter of, we applied for it, and we're fortunate enough to get approved on both of them through Yamaha, we sent them in the name. It's basically a six-month deal that they can use this Yamaha Viking utility vehicle for six months, at, you know, no cost to the city, no cost to the Motorsports, it's just something Yamaha's done. And then after that six months, we can reapply again, and so they can basically get it up to a year at absolutely no cost. And that's just, you know, hopefully our end, they'll give some good use out of it if they hadn't already.
We have gotten considerable use out of ours already, just came in handy several for occasions.
But it's a deal that Yamaha Motor Corporation has, has came up with. It's something they're doing throughout the whole United States, it's not just us, so very, you know, very thankful the way they do that.
Well, I appreciate you had that up, because I know that's, you know, had it not been for that, we wouldn't have gotten, so thank you very much.
It wasn't really a whole lot of trouble, it was pretty, pretty simple, really, so didn't take a whole lot of work anyway.
Any other announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is your second?
Oh, I see. What were we talking about the other day about all those? Well, everybody that participated in the buddy hatchet, fall fest, River Fall Fest, I mean, people just worked, volunteers, volunteerism in the city is as good as it is anywhere. And I know there were a lot of them that stayed up there early to late. Police Department involves them, which my, the street department, just individuals, we got this lady, you know, comes from Gettysburg, helps out, because she's just interested in community and just extremely proud of everybody being so cooperative and the endless hours they spent in, and it will be with the Nutcracker and all these other funds. So if you ain't got anything to do to the public, volunteer to join some club, because there's always a need for more paper. Most terms just dead balls, then they just really, I know they were worn out, no preparation, anyway.
Okay, I've got a motion from Greg to adjourn, is your second?
Second.
I'm third, second? I'm third, second?